This is the Township of Union Board of Education Regular Meeting for Tuesday, December 20th. Mrs. Capiello, roll call please.
Mrs. Brins Watson.
President.
Dr. Francis.
President.
Ms. McKenzie.
Here.
Mrs. Menisi.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Regis Darby.
Here.
Ms. Santana.
Are these working? Hello? Here.
Ms. Scott Hayden.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here. Mrs. McKenzie, that's going to slide through to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Coon, would you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Good evening. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend meetings of the public body at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Union Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof published in the Star Medias and Union County local sources, posted in the Administrative Building of 2369 Morris Avenue, New Jersey, filed with the Township Clerk and mailed to all purses if any who have requested said notice. During the course of the Board of Education, Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the Union Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals to identify themselves by name and address. The first public comment period is for items on the agenda. The second public comment period can be on any issue. Public comments are limited to three minutes respectfully. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board. Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Coon. Ms. McKenzie, would you please read the mission statement for us?
The mission of the Township of Union Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family, and community partnership. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered, and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills, and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you very much. At this point, we are going to have comments from the public on resolutions only. So if you would like to make a comment on any of the resolutions on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Please state your name, your address, and hold on to, I mean, recognize the three-minute time limit. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Santana. May I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiello, roll call please.
Mrs. Brins Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, to the October 11th work session, October 11th executive session, and abstain from October 18 regular, October 18 Executive Section 1 and October 18th Executive Session 2.
Mrs. Menisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes. We have our letters of retirements, our resignations, and that'll be addressed in policy, which takes us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I will step back to the mic. I am pleased to welcome distinguished guests in the audience, students, we have some teachers, a principal, and our Director of Information Technology. Tonight's spotlight is looking at two groups of students and their advisors who were doing some very special things in the way of instructional technology. So with that, I would like to invite Sandra Paul, our Director of Information Technology, to the mic to introduce our guests. You can take the mic down, please.
Hi, everyone. I would like to introduce a couple of the teachers and also our building principal from Burnett School. Everybody knows Mr. Shaw. Yeah, this is actually two groups from his schools. We have Mr. Churis, which is bringing out the esports belt. The, yeah, so I'm quite sure you guys know Burnett has been champs for the past couple of years, and he will be doing a presentation. We're also going to see a demo of actually playing esports. We brought controllers. I know that I challenged Dr. Francis to play the kids, so we'll see what happens. And then also, also John Irwin. He is our librarian over at Burnett, but he also is in charge of the Girls Who Code program over there. So there's a quite a few, a couple of girls. Yes. I saw the shirts and stuff. Couple of young ladies that are part of Girls Who Code, so they're here. And then also, I just want to introduce Regina Schaefer. She's the Vice President of the Garden State Esports League. And she will be here just to see what we're doing and to see how this demo goes. We'll see what happens. All right? So first of all, I'm going to give it to Eric Churis.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Members of the Board, members of the community, thank you for having us here today. Been running around like a madman since I got here. So we kind of titled this "Techin', Control of the Future" because, in a way, technology is kind of taking control of how everything runs. And there's more technology than just sitting in an office building, you know, standing around. There's a lot of opportunities that technology can bring to both our students and the community at large. So we want to address some of that with all of you today. So our focus right now is on the esports program, which our Burnett Barbarians have competed in for the last four years, three years? I can't keep track of it anymore. It seems like a blur with everything that's happened. I think I wouldn't be remiss to say we're one of the top middle school programs in the state. Regina? We've played competitively in three games so far. We're adding two more to our list this year, which is awesome. In Rocket League, though, we are the three, nope, sorry, we just won over the weekend. We are the four-time state champions now in Rocket League. Only dropping one title shot, which still irks me to this day. We've also competed in Super Smash Brothers Ultimate, where we were the number-two seed, but we did lose in the semifinals over the weekend. But still a very respectable showing by our players there. And we competed last year in Valorant, where we were the only middle school to make the playoffs with our kids competing against high school students, which was really impressive to see. This year, we're adding Knockout City, as well as Overwatch 2 to our competition list. So our kids are very excited to be participating in that this winter. But there's more to our program than just playing games. And as we've continued our program, we've worked on expanding outside of gameplay to include more career-oriented roles to our program, which makes me extremely glad to say that this year we have officially added streaming to our matches with commentary by one of our students for our Rocket League matches, which has been amazing to see get off the ground. We've also built in a podcasting program run by Mr. McGowan, who wasn't able to be here last night. I might have forgot to invite him. It was a crazy week for me. So, and Mr. Trez, who runs our streaming side of everything. So guys, if you're watching, I apologize for forgetting to tell you about it today. Don't yell at me tomorrow in school. But the idea being is that we want to build a program that resembles a professional program that you would see if you went to look at any professional esports team. So we're also looking to get people to come in to be our team managers, to have kids become content creators within our program, work on financial management, see how the money side of things can operate, as well as people who want to develop games. A lot of companies that want people to develop games want people who play games so they can draw on that gameplay experience going in beyond middle school. I am also going to do a little shout-out here to one of our former players. I don't think he knew I was going to do this today, but I'm going to embarrass him. Darian Cancel, who graduated from us last year, officially got recruited by a professional team a few weeks ago. So we have a former Barbarian, now a freshman on a, you know, professional roster there. So that's all credit to him, but definitely something I wanted to say, there are opportunities for our young students in this career going forward. But with that, I want to turn the mic over to Mr. Irwin, wherever he happens to be. There you are, as I go finish getting our kids ready for this match.
Hi, I'm John Irwin. I'm the librarian at Burnett Middle School. Nice to meet all of you today. I would like to introduce two of our students from the Girls Who Code. This is just a few of our students. Stand up, please. Could you tell the audience your name? And so both of these students are team leaders for Girls Who Code. And what's exceptional about these two students is they're open to helping other students learn how to code. In fact, one of the first meetings we had, and I showed them what my portfolio or my projects looked like, they laughed at me, which was great because they're really talented in what they do. And part of the program is to have, well, it really is about them teaching themselves and them teaching other girls about coding. As a facilitator, I love to watch this and see them get up in front of people and speak and teach. It's one of the hardest things to do, is to get in front of a group of people and to teach. And so I think that these experiences that they're having are excellent for when they get to high school and they want to take STEM classes, science, technology, engineering, and math. When they go to college and they're choosing their careers. This program, Girls Who Code, is an advocate for having job opportunities, internships. And if I can go to the presentation real quick, it says student-led. We're learning new coding languages. Ladies thought scratch, right? We plan on moving on to Python, which is another program. Paul has Minecraft as a game. We can learn how to code with that. It's a sisterhood, and that's really important because in this field, it was predominantly male. And this builds an opportunity for the girls to learn about coding. And this year's project is called the Middle School Experience at Burnett Middle School. So the two girls, any introduction you'd like to give to this, about it? It's a little bit of a parody about going to school, being a middle schooler, having all the, you know, getting dropped off on the bus, all of the testing you have all day. And finally, at the end of the day, you get to relax. So do any other things you want to say? Okay. All right, so here we go. It's about two minutes long. It's great to learn about dialogue, narrative, character setting, setting a stage, setting a sequence of events. All these things are important in jobs, project management, movies, film, et cetera. So she just got dropped off at school.
No.
Two seconds later. So thank you for letting us present on Girls Who Code.
Can we have the students stand up so we can applaud you too? Could we have the two students who are here from Girls Who Code stand up? Thank you so much.
Sarah and Genesis.
You're our role models.
Thank you.
Ms. Paul?
Okay, we are going to be working on setting up the competition between, we have two students, we have two students that will be playing, two of our board members. We have Rocket League we're going to be playing. So I was, we're going to be doing a demo. Actually, I don't know if you guys know, we, the high school esports lab is actually in that room right there. So any of the board members that would like to play the kids, I'm not going to tell you I'm going to play anybody. So because of that, just to let you know. Would you like to say a few words, Regina, about Garden State Esports League and what we're doing? What they're doing?
Five minutes.
Okay. I don't think we have five minutes, Erica.
I think Dr. Taylor's got that. Hi, everyone. I wasn't prepared to say anything. She said to come and support. But I am Regina Schaefer, and I'm one of the co-founders and Vice President of Garden State Esports. My co-founder and I, Chris Avilas, like three years ago, right before the pandemic, we started esports, scholastic esports, and it flourished. In fact, video games was one of the things that during the pandemic actually did flourish. A lot of people did not realize all of the SEL, because I'm an educator, this is my 29th year. And I love Girls Who Code because I talk computer science. But all of the SEL that comes with that, because students were, you know, at home, their families couldn't see their friends, but they could communicate with their friends with video games and still talk and chat. So that was important. I think a lot of people just assume that video games is what they think of at home casually. But at Garden State Esports, we focus on scholastic esports. And Eric touched on it a little bit, all of the CTE that is embedded with that. So there's a whole other side besides the competitive side that we offer. And it's, I love seeing the Girls Who Code. I just can't tell you how happy I was. One of the things that we offer is Cyber Security League. I think a lot of districts don't know that. Right now, we have about more than half of the state sign up with us. It is free. We have three in-person events. We have programming for parents, and we're growing. We're all volunteers, so, you know, we do the best we can at night. But please check us out. If you just, you know, Google Garden State Esports and see our website, we have a ton of information on there. We're growing every day.
So one of the things that most times when schools join an esports league, there's a cost to it. There's a high school league and et cetera, et cetera. Regina, just so you know, Regina is a teacher from another school district here in New Jersey. And Chris Avilas is another teacher in a school district in New Jersey. These are not administrators. These are regular teachers. I pulled her from her, more than likely, very quiet afternoon, leaving from her school to come up here and, you know, be a part of it and everything else. So we're going to start the game, and we're going to, you're going to be able to watch the game here as we play the Barbarians. I'm going to be on the Barbarian side, okay? I know, I know, I know who wins. But anyhow, we're going to play on the Barbarian side. There's something else that I don't think Regina or Eric might have brought up. This sport is also, can be lettered. And I know I've spoken about it, meaning that it can be, you know, something where kids get letters for it and that type of thing. There is tons of money of scholarships in this program. Just to let you know, there is lots of money in that. If I'm not mistaken, I think we have one student from New Jersey who got, no. Oh, 12 students from the native New Jersey, one of them from here. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Eric.
Hello? Yay, it works. All right, let me just join the spectators here so we can get started. All right, so for those of you that are unfamiliar with the game Rocket League, Rocket League is essentially a rocket-powered car soccer game, for lack of a better description here. Teams are normally either two or two, three-on-three. You will find people that play one-on-one, and they do have a couple other modes. This winter, we'll actually be playing hockey format. But just like in any expected soccer match, the goal is to put the ball into the opponent's net as quickly and as many times as you possibly can. One of the things that makes this game unique, though, among many other sports-style games, is in like a traditional soccer game like FIFA, if you want to pass the ball, you hit the pass button. The ball gets passed. In this game, you have to hit the ball to pass it. There is no automation. Everything, so, yeah, there are some physics involved in this. And as players play and progress in skill, you'll see them start flying around the board more or the field more, using that rocket power that's attached to all of their cars to actually fly through the air, anticipating where the ball is going to be, dribbling the ball on top of their car, all as they're trying to, again, put pressure on it. As you can see here, you can blow each other up. If you drive into someone fast enough, your car will detonate. They'll respond shortly after. But they have a good time. That is one of ours, yeah. Not sure if that was an improvement over the original taco, which was his previous name. He's going to yell at me for telling him that, but... Yes, everyone, it was a name that stood out. So over the weekend, as I said, we had our finals for this down at Rider University, which has been awesome. GSE has managed to have all the finals played on college campuses. We've done Rutgers- We've done Rutgers and Rider so far. I'm hoping one day we can get Kane, so I don't have to drive an hour to get there. Oh, cool. Okay, so Kane and Stockton are also on the radar, which is awesome. There is a lot of tact involved in this. As you can see, we kind of faked out the Board of Ed there. Hey, guys, go a little easy on them, they are new. We, we, yeah, yeah, with four titles, we've had a very dominant team for the last few years. We, this is, this is our game, and we like to make sure every other middle school knows it. But what's also great about this, and some of the things that GSE has also done, is they've added a, it's a challengers league. Is there your extension into the Special Olympics, correct? Or Special Olympics style? Unified, thank you. I knew it was something.
Students with special needs pair with regular students and play together. One thing that a lot of people don't realize is the communication skills, the collaboration, because they're playing on teams. So, there's not a lot of individual with this. If you're three V three, it's like with football, one person can't carry the entire team. You really do have to work with their partners, your teammates, I should say, you have to collaborate. All of those skills, all of those soft skills are present when they're doing this. So, it is not just casually gaming in your parents' basement like most people think. There's a lot more to it, and there's a lot of skills that teachers in the classroom can harness, that a lot of these students have and walk in the door with, but teachers just don't realize that, educators don't realize all of these skills, so.
No problem. And one, things.
I do, we should probably wind it down, because I have a few things to share as well, and I want to have the kids come out so we can recognize them.
Absolutely. I'll tell them to just, you can step out.
And let's get the students around of applause. Okay, guys. Congratulations on being the number one ranked team in the state. Does the board have any questions while we have them here? Ms. McKenzie?
My question is, what are we doing as a district, or what have we done thus far to move toward making esports a lettered varsity sport in Union? Anybody?
To my knowledge, we haven't started that process yet. I know that, I believe, we spoke with it at a back-to-school night, but I was in the middle of a season, so I was a little, little busy at the moment, but that is definitely something I would love to see. There are several already districts in the state of New Jersey that do award varsity letters for esports programs. I believe Barnegat was one of the first, but several more have joined in after, and I would love to see Union, you know, take that step forward and start recognizing this, especially as we've got a pipeline right now from our middle schools into our high schools, with a lot of talent coming up over the next couple of years.
I would like to see that as well.
My recommendation to you and Ms. Paul is that you reach out to Mr. Zeaser, our athletic director, and try to get that ball rolling. Maybe it's something we can have done in time for next year.
All right, I'd like it.
So, are there other questions or comments?
I'd like to say thank you to you gentlemen for, for, for doing this, for embarking and taking our children and molding them, girls, boys, and everybody in Burnett School, because without you, what are we, right? I always say consistently, like, my number one are always these children, are number one are always these children, but you guys are our frontline, our warriors, and I thank you, I, I'm, I'm in awe, right? What is awe? Just bowing down and, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much. We've had a lot of natural talent to help, I guess.
Anybody else?
Oh, yes.
Just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Paul, because I knew where this had started, and I know it came a long way from three and a half years ago. So, thank you to Ms. Paul for having this on the agenda three years ago, so shout out to you, Ms. Paul.
And thank you for being here, students, families, we really, really appreciate you coming out on a cold night. At this time, you're welcome to head out if you'd like, we're going to continue the meeting. Ms. Paul, before you leave to go to the library meeting in town, can you please set me back up so that I can broadcast? Thank you. So, while Ms. Paul's setting that up, I recognize that we've already taken up quite a bit of time for my report. I do want to show you some slides, but I'll, I'll work through them relatively swiftly. I've got to share some important information and celebrate some more students. So, Ms. Paul, just, just set me back up so that I can pop in the sending code. Yeah, there you go. So, just pull up a code for me, would you? There we go. I'm good. I must already be locked in. Thank you. So, one thing that's remarkable about our district, of course, is our student population. Our students are amazing, and not just because they're smart and they're athletic and they're wonderful lesbians, but also because they're, they're coming out of the woodwork, experts in all different things. So, besides technology, for instance, I'm sure many of you know by now, two of our students were accepted to Princeton University. They're actually being recognized tonight by the town committee, so they are there while we're here. By the way, the town committee is also going to be recognizing our high school musical students, so I'm really excited about that for them. What makes Ben and Ms. Yale's acceptance even more special is the fact that they're both from the same high school. And those of you who know how admissions works, particularly at the more selective institutions, it's really hard to send multiple students to, especially an Ivy League of Princeton caliber, from one school. So, those kids are remarkable. Other student achievements, which you just have to know about, we had three students go to the Senior Citizen Center last week, Connor, Ben, and Chris Love. Connor is a junior, Ben and Chris Love are seniors. They spoke to the seniors, with the seniors. We actually had a senior who was graduated from the class of 1945 here, sharp as a tack, asking questions. I got an email today, by the way, from one of the supervisors there. Already, thanks to these students, we're going to start up a, or restart, because you may have had this in the past, a computer technical support program for the seniors. So, we'll send our students to the Senior Citizen Center between 10 and 11, maybe once a month, once every other month, so they can sit side by side with the seniors and, and support them. Again, the diversity is amazing. You've got kids who are putting on a show, which by the way, was amazing. If you didn't have a chance to go to the show, you could watch it online. It, it, it kind of blew me away, High School Musical. But besides all of those different talents, we have a really strong junior ROTC program with 100 cadets, but a waiting list of something like 24 additional students who want to sign up. And two of our cadets, I'm just giving a shout out to Kearns here, two of our cadets just recently got their physical training jackets. They had to sing the entire army song, rote memory, error-free, so they can get their jacket, which they got. I'd also like to give a shout out to our athletes. Every month, I'm going to provide the board and the community an athletes update, so I do want to share with you the fall season report. I receive a report for every season. I'll share that with the board and the community. We had eight teams compete, four had winning records, four didn't. I do, though, want to give, like, specific shout outs to these amazing athletes. I'm not going to read off the slide, but I would love for you to refer to what I'm sharing about Kayla, Maria, Chris, Justin, and Christopher. We had kids who, by the way, made second team. We didn't have a gymnast other than Kayla receive a scholarship. Again, another amazing feat by a student from Union. Some gymnastics programs are huge, ours is big, but you know, gymnastics is not a sport out there like football, obviously, basketball. So, for Kayla to receive a $10,000 scholarship to, this HBCU is amazing. And then, of course, our all-conference. Every season, we have numbers of athletes getting on these first-team conferences, first conference team, teams. So, here are another slide of some, some recognition I want to give a shout out to. Our footballs, by the way, our football team is young. Next year could be an even better season as the kids are getting older. We lost a lot, I think we lost 22 seniors this past season, so that's a heavy hit, but nevertheless, look at all the kids that we already have on first-team all-conference. So, the things are looking really, really bright for the season ahead. The winter season just started last week, so I want to share some score reports with you. We placed very well in wrestling, and already, we have a winning record across the board, swimming, boys' basketball, and track is still becoming a really, really strong sport for Union, especially our relay kids. So, I'm going to stop there. Next month, I'm going to continue to talk about our athletes and other highlights about student accomplishments. I do, though, want to quickly provide an update about the strategic plan. I pointed out before, we have 30 action steps built into the, to the plan. Of those, right now, they are 10 that have not started, 15 are in progress, five have been completed. I want to just highlight one particular action step that has been implemented already. We had Dr. Edward Fergus, who our own Dr. Perez brought into the district to begin an audit of all of our programs for equity. Dr. Fergus is from Rutgers. Here's a picture of our team that met with him this past week. I'm going to wrap things up by sharing some just random but important information. I'm sure you've all been seeing news reports about standardized test scores being distributed. I will be making a presentation to the board and the community about two standardized tests and one internal assessment set of results. What I'll do, like I did last year, is I'll, I'll show you using, good night, guys, I'll show you using multiple bar graphs, comparisons among the NJSLA Start Strong and I-Reddy scores. Again, I-Reddy is the internal assessment we're using. Parents, guardians, especially those around the table, you're going to get your Start Strong reports January 9th, or that's the day we're going to start beginning to distribute them. So, you'll either get them that day or the next day. I do want to set up my presentation for late January by planting this seed. One thing that disturbs me about news reports is we're very much, from a national level to the state level, really to the state level, we're very much focusing on deficit, learning loss. Learning loss is a buzz phrase right now. I strongly encourage everyone in this room and our parents and guardians at home, and especially our students, to try to stop thinking of a deficit mindset and think more about a growth mindset. That's the approach we have to take. So, let's not just harp on the learning loss, let's harp on what we're doing to move forward. So, I'll talk about that more in late January. And besides my HIP report, this is the last set of data I want to share with you, the October snapshot was just finalized. The October snapshot is the, the student enrollment information we send to the Department of Education every year, and it's really important, because that is the data that the state uses to determine our state aid, numbers of special needs students, numbers of students. So, we have to get this right. So, I'm sharing this data with you, because it's probably the most, some of the most accurate data you're going to find. What you're going to see is we saw an increase of a couple of hundred students. I know that's not a shock to anybody, because we've been hearing about that from one year to the next. This, while it's not shocking, I guess, I need to put out there, our low socioeconomic student population number increased by roughly 9%. We were hovering around 40% last year, now we're up to 49%. And the reason why I don't think it's shocking is because we all know that the pandemic is still impacting, negatively impacting families all around the country. And then finally, our ELL population, those who speak a second language or not native English speakers, did go up, not significantly, but did go up by 22 students. And finally, just want to share the latest HIP data. We had 12 cases, only one was found, and the other 11 were not. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Regis? Sorry. Yeah, I can't hear you.
In terms of the 2-8-5-9, and it turned into the 3-5-5-9, does that numbers made any one of our existing schools turn into a Title I school?
No.
Good, okay.
It didn't change the Title I status for any of our schools.
Thank you.
Good question. That concludes my report.
Ms. Scott Hayden?
The Education Student Discipline Committee Resolutions. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Education Student Discipline Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration. I will be moving them in block, there is no objection. Narenan E1A through E5.
Moved by Ms. Scott Hayden, seconded by Ms. Manisi. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea, would you do our fiscal resolutions, please?
Can it's moved by Ms. O'Shea?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Manisi.
F22 is information purposes only.
Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please. Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Operation Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. We have O1 and O2.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please. It was moved by Ms. Manisi and seconded by Ms. McKenzie.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
I wanted to say congratulations again.
Thank you.
To both of you, and I see the new board member coming on in January's here, so I want to say congratulations to you, to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Francis. Thank you. Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie, please.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Personnel Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. P1A1 through P5.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Brynswatson. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi? And P1B, I have to abstain from P1B12, and yes to everything else. Mr. O'Shea? Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Residency Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration. R1 through R5.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Regis Darby?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes. We don't have any resolutions for the Technology Committee, but I did want to ask if there are any updates or anything that you want to share with the board.
Other than what I shared during our last meeting?
Other than what I shared during our last meeting, no. Except that I do want to echo Mrs. Regis Darby's acknowledgement of Mrs. Paul and the work that she and her team are doing. I know Technology Committee doesn't sound sexy as much as other committees. However, the work that these people are doing behind the scenes is amazing, taking care of all of our technologies, technology needs in the district. They're working hard, they're looking at innovative ways in which they can assist our students and deliver instruction. And so I just want to make sure that we acknowledge them and their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. May I have a motion to approve our bills?
The bills. Move the bills.
Yeah. Yeah, moved by Ms. Brynswatson. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
I abstain from P-02, 302, 128, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Manisi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea? Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Is there any unfinished business?
Oh.
Ms. Regis Darby?
Yes. I would like to say to Dr. Francis, oh my God. No, on a serious note, I would like to just say, thank you for your service. Stop looking at me like you're expecting something special. Just want to say to you, Dr. Francis, thank you so much for the over eight years that you have been giving back to the community, giving back to the students here in Union. You have been a rebel. You have been an envelope pusher. You have asked questions that sometimes didn't seem like it was the right questions or the necessary questions that needed to be asked, but when you think about it, they needed to be asked. So thank you for your service. I know the students here appreciate it. I know a lot of parents appreciate the eight and a half years that you have done this. I appreciate you, even though, not all the time, but I appreciate the work that you have done for this community. You know you're like a brother to me. We've become family over the past, since pre-K, so it's different. You know Melissa here, she's like a sister, so this is, when we leave all of this board thing, tomorrow, I'm still calling you on the phone and harassing you, so. But I just wanted to say thank you so much. I love you and I appreciate you, and I appreciate your time and your commitment that you have given to the students here in Union. So thank you so much.
Any other unfinished business? Ms. Manisi?
Oh, I also, I don't know you as well as Mrs. Regis Darby, but I do appreciate all the time that you've given to the school district, the community at large. We had our times together, but when push comes to shove, we're all here for the same reason, for the kids. And I appreciate all the hard work, the time that we spent working together, so thank you. And enjoy the little rest you're going to get, because you might be coming back, we don't know. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Brynswatson, Mr. O'Shea. Okay, Mr. O'Shea, Ms. Brynswatson.
Thank you.
That's right, he's the only man left.
Thank you, Kim.
Mrs. Brynswatson?
Thank you, Madam President. So first, I also would like to extend a congratulation to our returning board members and to our new board member. And I feel like I'm just behind you, echoing your sentiments. And Dr. Francis, I am definitely going to miss you, being in the seats. Thank you for asking the hard questions, some questions that no one else would ask. Thank you for keeping us on our toes. I am going to miss many of our conversations and our interactions. I can't, I'm having a tough time imagining what this board is going to look like without you here. I admire the fact that you have been so committed. I thought you were crazy when you were running again. But it is just more of a demonstration to me of how committed you are to this district, to our students, and to this community. And no one, no one can take that away from you. No one can say that you weren't dedicated and committed to the well-being of our students, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Kosta.
Okay. Dr. Francis? Go ahead.
I don't have a lot to say. I've only been here for a year, and I never really make comments like this. I kind of stay within my little box. But really briefly, I will miss you being on this board, and I really look forward to you challenging us from the audience, as long as you stay within your three minutes. All jokes aside, it's been a pleasure serving with you for this year.
Thank you.
And I'm going to be brief as well. I will say, I echo the same sentiments that have already been said this evening. I will say to you the same thing I said to you the day when I met you at Jefferson School, when you walked up to me and you introduced yourself and asked who I was. I think you knew who I was, you just couldn't figure out who I was on the ticket. So we had a conversation about what our real true authenticity was and our intent was, which was students. And I said to you then, may the best team win. I said, because we're all here for the same purpose. I really admire your passion for this work, doing it eight years, God bless you. I don't know if I'll be here for eight years, but I can just tell you, it takes a true amount of dedication and courage to sit in that seat for eight years. It's a thankless job. So I just say to you, I wish you well in whatever you're going to do next. We will miss you on this board. You can come to the audience though and bring me some Swedish fish. You made a lot of minds in plenty of board meetings, so yeah, come in and share some candy with me. But sincerely and wholeheartedly, you will be missed on this board, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kim.
Dr. Francis? You and I have had such an interesting relationship since you've been on this board. But in talking with you, every election we'd be up at Jefferson, and the man that I talked to there, your passion came through, your love of this district came through, and we connected. You know, I think those times, we really, really connected. And I had a real opportunity to get to know you and to understand you and to appreciate all the work that you've put in with this district. And I kind of like the fact that you don't call me names anymore. But I think that you've been a tremendous asset to the board, you know, and we've been able to agree to disagree, which is really great for us because it wasn't always that for us, you know. So I am absolutely going to miss you on the board. I'm not going to ugly cry like I normally do, but I am going to miss you. And I'm going to miss your passion, and I'm going to miss you challenging, you know, the status quo or what you believe to be. And that's it. I'm just really glad that we were able to connect this year. And with that being said, we really accomplished a lot as a board. Like overall, I am just, I can't even tell you how proud I am of each and every person on here because we really worked together, you know. And the board that you saw in public was the board that was in executive session. It wasn't rude, it wasn't disrespectful, it wasn't yelling or anything like that. It was focused, and there was a tremendous amount of commitment. And we realized that we were all there for the same reason. So I am so proud of you as I sit here and not be here next year. I don't know who the president's going to be, but it's not going to be me. But I just want to tell you all that I am extremely, extremely, extremely proud of each and every one of you and all the work that we got done for this year because our students benefit from everything we did. And that's why we're up here for free doing this. So that's it. That's it for me. Anyone else?
Nope.
Go ahead. She always has to be the last word.
Yeah. So, Dr. Francis, I remember when you got sworn in your first year. We didn't even know each other. And I saw you take your seat. And what I can say to you is that over the years until this moment, change is uncomfortable, right? So at times, when somebody is going against the grain, we see it differently or will have our own opinions. But you consistently went on your own, and you changed. You changed a lot. I look up to you for your passion and your dedication. You make me want to be a better board member, right? We've sat on the same side of the table, and we've sat on opposite side of the table for a lot of things. And what I can say honestly is that I look forward to the work that we are going to do moving forward, wherever I sit and wherever you sit. You have consistently tried to change this district for the better of our children, the better of our educators. And you came with data and questions, and that's what it's about. We have new board members, old board members in the audience, and that's what it's consistently about, coming to the table and trying to make things better and trying not to yell at each other, even though I might have. Sorry, Akast. I'm doing better consistently. Thank you, thank you. But what I will say, Dr. Francis, seriously, I doubt that this is the last time that I'm going to see you, but I appreciate the eight years that you and your family have given up. And you are, you're a role model to me. I look up to you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Any new business? Oh, Dr. Francis?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all my fellow board members for their comments regarding my service here on the board. I've been on the board for eight years. This is the ninth year that I'm finishing up, and this is my last day, and I just wanted to say thank you, guys. I want to apologize to you, Marilyn, and in public because, you know, I did act, I acted, you know, sometimes wrong. And I wanted, I wanted to say, I think I apologized you before, but I want to apologize to you in person, just to say, you know, I make mistakes, I'm not perfect. And I apologize.
None of us are perfect.
And I want to thank Akast for keeping me in check, you know. She always, behind the scenes, she would always tell me about, you know, myself, and I really appreciate that.
Your wife is here, I'm his board wife.
And I enjoyed really having, I mean, this was really probably my best year as a board member. I think I've been more at peace and at rest this year than I have with other board members, should I say. But I wanted to thank Kim and Marissa and Chastity for, you know, for their services past year. I mean, it's been a pleasure really working with you guys, you know. I didn't know what to expect. I mean, I've known Chastity because our kids played baseball together at one point, and, you know, we kind of worked together on a different level. But, you know, for you guys, you two, you know, I didn't know very much about you. But, you know, Kim, you definitely show your dedication when I hear you speak. Marissa, I just think you are on point when it comes to human resource. I mean, you know, I was very impressed with you. And John, for you for being finance, I wanted to say that you have been very dedicated to that, you know, to watch our purse, you know, and to hold the finances accountable for this district. The last thing is I want to say, it was a pleasure working with you, Mr. Buggy, over this last year and a half or two maybe. Yolanda Coon, I want to say that you are a tremendous asset to our district. I wish that the fellow, my fellow board members would recognize that, that what you've done over these past two years, it has been more than I've seen over the last nine, that I, I mean, eight to nine years that I've been here. And I want to say thank you. And I'm sorry, Diane, I want to thank you for keeping me on top of everything from my, following my ethics, we call the paperwork for the state, you know, all that, everything that you've done for this district, I just want to say thank you. And to the administration, Dr. Taylor, I wanted to just wish you well, wish you the best going forward. Jerry, the same. And Gretel, I don't think we really got to speak as much, but I want to just thank you for what you do for our district. But lastly, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can for our kids. That's always been my thing. I knew that if my kids, I don't care where they have gone, in the state of New Jersey to school, it could be in the worst district, they would do, they would do well because they have two parents that care for them, and that's on top of them. But I just always wanted to represent also the other kids that don't have the same support system at home, you know. And so that's always been my focus. And if I offended anyone on this board, I apologize, forgive me. And I just want to wish you guys luck going forward in the next year. And I will come in the meeting, not to start problems, but to come and to support.
Bring the passion, you're going to bring the passion.
Thank you.
Any new business? Okay, that brings us to...
Oh. I do have new business. A couple of things that I've been thinking about. Number one, I just want to congratulate all of the students and their families in the district at Burnett, Kwame, and the high school that were inducted into the National Honor Society. There were 28 kids from Kwame. I don't know how many kids from Burnett, but about 90-something at the high school were inducted this past week. That was up from about 70 of them last year. And what I realize, you know, I, our kids are amazing, they do all the work, right? They're the ones who are getting themselves into the books and being great students. And they have their families there to support them and kick them in the butt when they're falling a little behind. But it's truly a testament to the faculty in our district and their dedication to our children and to teaching them. And I just want to thank them for that. I want to congratulate again the high school for an amazing musical, an amazing show that they put together for us. I want to thank Missino at the Burnett Middle School, who is doing amazing work with the choir at Kwame. I want to congratulate, congratulate Miss Arietta also at Kwame School. So because she was named Teacher of the Year, right, for Kwame. Great things happening in our district, and I just want to share that with you. The reason I thought about not sharing it, because I don't have the names for all of the teachers. And part of me wanted to call all the schools and say, who was Teacher of the Year? And here's the thing, we keep finding ourselves in this position again. We're not recognizing our faculty on this board. Because I shouldn't have to go chasing names. I want to know who they are, but I don't think that I should be going chasing names. I think we as a board need to make a commitment here and now to going forward, having that information ahead of time so that we can acknowledge these people. They work hard for our kids, and we want to acknowledge our children for all the work that they're having. I mean, I think, you know, I know that as a board, we should be there for those who are doing so well academically. You know, we're celebrating kids going to Princeton, that's amazing. Two of our high schoolers going to an Ivy- Two of our high schoolers going to an Ivy League institution. You can't say that we don't have amazing students, right? Nobody can say that to us. But I just want to, even though I don't have the names of those teachers, I want to thank them for their work and congratulate them. And I hope that in the new year, we'll make an actual effort as a board to have those individuals here and be able to recognize them publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince Watson. Comments from the public? Ms. Hall? Just state your name, your address, and adhere to the three-minute time rule.
Sorry. Jill? I can use my teacher voice, doesn't matter. Jill Hall, Whitewood Road. I wanted to just thank the Farmer Fam, an organization from the high school filled with some of our best and brightest students and for the work that they've done over the holiday season. They started with Thanksgiving and they put baskets out for countless numbers of families in the community that might have gone without. They spent some time last week wrapping all of the gifts that they purchased for families within the district. And they were able to distribute them throughout this week for some of our families who we sometimes forget may not have all the things that we take for granted over the holiday season. I was fortunate enough to deliver one of the packages to one of, one of the families. It's just kind of what the holidays are supposed to be, you know. And it was, I watched those kids and their enthusiasm and it was really amazing. And it's really who we are as the school community. So, I wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Holberts and her crew of Farmer Fam for the work that they did. And I don't know if I can speak as eloquently as everybody else. Dr. Francis, but I'm gonna take a half a minute to thank you as well for the time that you've served on the board. You know, I think that Mrs. Regis Darby said it well. And she said, you know, you push the envelope. And I think at times when it was needed and at times when it may be not so popular, but you said the things that needed to be said. And I really want to thank your family as well because time spent here was time away from now. And you can't do it without the support of your family. And I think of your family and your wife is always volunteering on the PTA. And you're here and you're coaching. And I think about how much you've given to the community over the years. And it's not unnoticed and it's greatly appreciated. So, I have a spot right next to you, next to me in the front. And I'll see you in the neighborhood. But thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hall.
And for all of you, have a wonderful holiday season. Enjoy the rest, enjoy your family.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Paul Casey, Paul Casey, 135 Walton Avenue. First, I want to congratulate the incoming new board member and the returning board members. You know, as I was listening to the comments, I wish some of those comments about Dr. Francis were made before the election. But, you know, here we are. But I too want to thank Dr. Francis and Melissa and the kids for their commitment to our district. We first met nine years ago as, you know, I was getting more involved in the school district. And I think Ms. Scott Hayden, the two words that stick out to me when I'm thinking about the work that you're, are courage and dedication. And you've had the courage to say the things that needed to be said and the dedication to come back and say them again. And that wasn't just for your kids, as you talked about, your kids were gonna be fine. But you did that for my kids and my neighbor's kids and my other neighbor's kids. And that speaks volumes about you. And I just, I can't thank you enough. Yocasta, I want to thank you for, you know, thanking our district community about the amazing work that is happening in our schools. You and I were at some of those same events in regards to the National Honor Society and things. And it's, you know, to see Mrs. Arietta get recognized and be recognized by the children, you know, they chose her. So, that speaks volumes about the work that's happening in our district. And, you know, it is super important that we continue to recognize those things. But my main focus tonight was to say thank you, Dr. Francis.
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Casey. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Yes, that's correct, Madam President. We need to go into executive session to discuss confidential personnel matters and litigation attorney-client matters.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Did you make the motion?
So moved.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Prince Watson, yeah.
So moved.
So moved, Ms. Prince Watson, seconded by Mrs. Venisi. Mrs. Capiella, roll call, please. Mrs. Prince Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Venisi?
Yes.
Ms. Rocha? Mrs. Regis Darby? Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Have a very merry Christmas.
Yes.
Happy.
Happy holidays.
So you press the road now.
Holidays.
Is it Marissa?
Nope.
Move by, Mr. Kim. Just one second. Bye, Mr. Kim. All in favor, so did I.